Okay, everybody. I'd like to call the December 12th, 2024, meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Can we have -- roll, please?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Carter is absent. Commissioner Cisco?
Here.
Commissioner Pardo?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
Vice Chair Duggan?
Here.
Chair Weeks. Let the record show that all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Carter.
Thank you. With that, we have one set of minutes from the November 14th meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? Okay, so with that, those will be approved as submitted. And can I just confirm something with the attorney? If we don't have public comments or comments on an item, do I need to open the public hearing? I noticed the other night at council, they only did it when there was a comment. So, never mind, I'll just do it the way I've been doing it. Sorry. It just is a funny thing to say, "public comments," when there's no public. Okay, sorry. Sorry to throw a monkey wrench in the works. But so with that, if you're in the chambers and wish to make comments on item 3.1, please make your way to the podium. Seeing nobody rise, we'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items. We are now taking public comments on item four, non-agenda matters. This is a time when any person may address a commission on matters that are not listed on this agenda but which are in our subject matter jurisdiction. Are there -- you would like to make a comment under this item? Please make your way to the podium. Seeing no one rise, we'll close the public comment portion and move on to commission business. Our purpose is that we are charged with carrying out the California Planning and Zoning laws in the city of Santa Rosa. Duties include implementing of plans, ordinances, and policies relating to land use matters, assisting in writing, and implementing the general plan and area plans, holding public hearings, and acting on proposed changes to the zoning code, zoning map, general plan, tentative subdivision maps, and undertaking special planning studies as needed. And so that will move into commissioner reports. Do we have any commissioner reports tonight? Okay, I would just like to remind folks, even if we don't have a meeting, if you could just continue to check your emails like once a week, because sometimes even without a meeting, we'll have some information coming from staff, so that would be helpful. So with that, we will go ahead and open the public comment period on item 5.2, commissioner report. If you'd like to make a comment on this item, please make your way to the podium. Seeing no one rise, we'll close this, and then we will move on to department report.
Thank you, Chair Weeks, members of the Commission. I'm Jessica Jones, Deputy Director of Planning. I just have one thing that I wanted to bring to your attention. The Woodlands at Shenate Project, which I know all of you are interested in following, there is an EIR scoping meeting that was planned for Monday evening. We learned early this morning that there is a conflict with another important meeting for that area, and the Santa Rosa -- it is the Santa Rosa School Closure Committee meeting is held the same day at the same time and is looking at the potential of closing a school that is in that neighborhood. And so there were some concerns that it would conflict with, you know, folks wanting to potentially go to both meetings, and which one would they attend? So the school meeting is not able -- they're not able to reschedule that meeting, so it's last minute, but we went ahead and canceled the EIR scoping meeting for the Woodlands at Shenate Project. So if you are out in the community and talking to folks, if you can help us spread that word, an email went out to the distribution list for that project this afternoon. Our website was updated, and we've also contacted so far one of the more active folks in the neighborhood to ask them to help us spread that word. We will also be posting a staff member at the door at the Finley Center where the meeting is set to be held, so if anybody shows up, they'll be given that information. So we will be rescheduling that meeting. It will likely be in January. We don't have a specific date yet, but it will be probably after -- at a very minimum, it'll be after January 5th. We want to avoid the holidays for folks. So a new notice and more information will go out once we have the new date, time, and location for that. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to open the public comment period on department report. If anybody has a comment on what Ms. Jones just reported out, please go to the podium. Seeing no one, I'll close that, and then we'll go on to statement of abstentions.
I will have to recuse from item 11-2. I have a home in one of our historic districts, and any decision that I would make on that item would affect me directly, so I will not participate on 11-2.
Thank you. Any other abstentions? Okay, then we don't have any presentations or consent items or report items, so we'll move right on to our first scheduled item, 11.1, Public Hearing State Legislation Zoning Code Text Amendment. And I believe Ms. Nicholson is going to lead us off.
Thank you, Chair Weeks. Good afternoon, members of the Commission. The item before you this afternoon is a text amendment which incorporates some recent state legislation in addition to a proposed amendment to the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance based on a bill that was passed a number of years ago, and this is an optional amendment. I won't go into too much detail here. This is probably familiar to many of you. We typically come on an annual basis to incorporate changes to state law which preempted our local regulations. There were a number of housing bills that were signed into law in 2023, which include density bonus, zoning code, and general plan consistency, shared parking, and also some changes to accessory dwelling unit law. This amendment also includes accessory dwelling unit changes, which were just signed by the governor in October, and this is important so that the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which has some local provisions, remains in effect at the first of the year. The slide just shows that these amendments are based on legislation that was signed in 2021, 2023, and also 2024. The first kind of bucket or category of amendments relates to accessory dwelling units. So the two Assembly bills and one Senate bill, which were signed in October, which affect accessory dwelling units, are shown here on the slide, but one permanently eliminates the requirement for an owner occupancy deed restriction for properties that develop with an accessory dwelling unit. So years ago, it was required that someone either live in the primary unit or the accessory dwelling unit if they own the property. This is no longer a requirement. In addition, there's some language that is just modified, which allows for unpermitted accessory dwelling units to go through the permit process even if they have building violations or zoning violations, unless those violations would present a threat to public health or safety. So the way the zoning code reads now is any ADU constructed prior to 2018 would be eligible. Now it's prior to 2020. And then finally, Senate Bill 1211 is kind of the most meaningful change from this year. This expands the number of detached accessory dwelling units that can be allowed on multifamily properties that have existing multifamily developments from two up to eight. Eight detached ADUs are not always allowed. It depends how many multifamily units are currently on site. So it's a maximum of eight. If there are currently six multifamily units on the site, then you would be able to develop a maximum of six detached ADUs. In addition, the Senate bill removes a requirement to replace the uncovered parking space on a single-family or multifamily property if that space is used to create an ADU. This slide here reflects additional changes to the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance that is based on a Senate bill which has been in effect since January of 2022. Senate Bill 9 allows for single-family property owners to subdivide their lots and then develop each one of those lots with two housing units. So a lot that originally would have only allowed one primary unit, in many cases, can have up to eight if you include accessory dwelling units. This Senate bill allows for jurisdictions to regulate the number of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units on properties that are taking advantage of both of those provisions of Senate Bill 9. So they do the two-lot subdivision and a two-unit development on each of those lots. Those lots, under the way the city's current ordinance is written, could create accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. However, we are allowed to limit or prohibit accessory dwelling units on those properties under state law. And so because city staff have been processing these applications for some time, we are recommending some changes to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance to limit the number of ADUs and JADUs allowed when properties are developed under Senate Bill 9. So again, both provisions apply, and if a property is outside of the wildland urban interface and has a certain street width, then they are able to develop one ADU and one JADU on that site. If they are within the wildland urban interface or outside of it, but the street width is not of a certain dimension, then they are not able to construct an ADU or JADU. There are also some minor amendments to the city's density bonus ordinance. One is just some kind of updates to some longstanding definitions related to residential density and 100% affordable projects. The other relates to what's called an additional density bonus. So currently, the -- there's kind of a -- well, there's a state density bonus, and the city has a supplemental density bonus, and the supplemental density bonus goes at the time it went above and beyond what state law allowed. This new provision allows kind of for additional options to achieve up to 100% density bonus, and so projects do not have to be 100% affordable now to receive that 100% density bonus. And I'm happy to talk through the changes and display a table if that would be helpful, but it just really provides additional options for that 100% density bonus. Assembly Bill 323 includes some minor changes. Most of them really don't impact the zoning code but relate to how we process regulatory agreements after a density bonus is granted for projects, but there is a modification to a qualified nonprofit housing corporation in the definition section. I'm just going to walk through a few miscellaneous amendments. One is related to shared parking. The city currently allows shared parking in a few different circumstances. This state bill requires that the city allow for shared parking to meet minimum parking requirements in more circumstances. In cases where an applicant provides a parking study from a professional, the city is required to grant the shared parking kind of minor conditional use permit, and that is formalized through an agreement recorded against the properties. There's an additional amendment which relates to general plan and zoning consistency. As the Planning Commission knows, it's important that properties have consistent zoning and general plan designations because we want to see our properties develop with the vision of the general plan. And state law is really memorializing this in requiring that any cases where the zoning does not implement the general plan, the city must process that application to be consistent with any objective standards within the general plan and ignore any inconsistent zoning standards. The text amendment before you does require that four findings are made, and these are outlined in the draft resolution and shown here on the slide. Each of these amendments have been reviewed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and have found -- been found to be exempt. This text amendment was noticed to the public by way of an ad in the Press Democrat and also through the city's webpage and email distribution list. At the time of this presentation, no comments have -- had been received. We recently received a comment within the last hour or so related to the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance. We did review what was included in the letter. The letter raised concerns that the city's ordinance wasn't consistent with state law. However, the items that are identified in the letter are not proposed to be changed this evening, and so what planning staff will do is review that letter more thoroughly, and then we will also continue our work with Housing and Community Development. This is the Department of the State that's responsible for ensuring that cities are complying with state law. We will be submitting our ordinance to that department once the council adopts it to ensure that it's consistent, and if there are additional changes required, we'll be back before you to make those changes. So with that, the Planning and Economic Development Department recommends that the Commission, by resolution, recommend that the council adopt a zoning code text amendment to amend various sections of the city's zoning code, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Cisco?
Yeah, a couple clarifications. With the unpermitted units, when I hear the word "unpermitted," I'm going, does that mean unpermitted they would not have been allowed there at all? Or does that strictly mean they didn't get a building permit for their ADU or building? And then when we go on to say that they would not be facing any consequences for violations unless there was -- they violated standards that are there mostly to protect the health and safety of the occupants in the city. And so what would be an example of something that would not be a standard that protects the health? Because I'm thinking building standards typically, you know, they reference our Climate Action Plan, there's electrical things. So I'm just trying to get my head around what would be something that would not impact the health and safety of the occupants or the city and that would just be blanketly allowed?
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cisco, for the question or questions. The first is unpermitted in this context. It means they didn't receive the permit that would be required from our department. The second question is a great question. I'm not aware of this coming up yet. I wouldn't -- I agree that, you know, when it comes to building code, those are based in life safety, those regulations. My thought is it could be related to things like, I don't know, aesthetic, if there's certain design standards, potentially height, square footage, things like that would be -- that's just kind of top of mind, but, you know, I think it really would be a case-by-case discussion and decision.
Okay, great. And then usually when we're dealing with these sort of state mandated changes, we have very few options or choices, and I'm aware in this one with the ADU and JDUs, we have three options that were outlined in the staff report, and you have -- you've made your recommendation for number three. But could you explain what would be the consequences if we were to choose either number one or number two? To permit ADUs and JDUs on properties developed under both provisions of SB 9, regardless of location within the WU or street width? Or number two, prohibit ADUs and JDUs citywide on properties developed under both provisions of SB 9? So there may be density consequences or whatever, but just so we all know, what are we choosing and why?
I'm happy to talk through that a bit more. So we're on page nine of the staff report. There's just a section which discusses the, really, the three options that are before the Commission to recommend to council as it relates to regulating the number of ADUs and JDUs for properties that develop under Senate Bill 9. So the first would be that kind of status quo, so it would allow for additional residential development on properties that are developed under Senate Bill 9. So more units, more ADUs, more JDUs would be allowed all across the city, and currently that is the default because we don't have this text in our zoning code. The second option would be to prohibit any ADUs or JDUs for these properties that already have this additional density allowed under Senate Bill 9. So fewer units would be allowed under that circumstance that are currently allowed. And then the third option, which is staff's recommendation, is kind of the middle ground. So it's looking at balancing our need for housing and our need for a variety of housing types with the concerns about additional density within the city's high-fire areas, the wildland urban interface, and also in cases outside of those areas where the streets are really narrow and there are issues already related to parking and just emergency vehicle access.
Does that -- Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Can I add one additional clarification just on the unpermitted ADUs? The current law already prohibits the agencies from denying the permits constructed before 2018. That's changing to 2020. The exception had been if correcting the violation was necessary to protect the health and safety, and this makes the additional clarification that correcting the violation is necessary to comply with the standard specified in a specific Health and Safety Code section that pertains to substandard buildings. So it gives some more specificity, which I think was what you were asking, how do we determine? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Sanders?
Can you repeat that? Because that was kind of my question. I'm sorry.
It's changing the exception to give more specificity as to if the violation is necessary to comply with the standard specified in Health and Safety Code 17920.3, which is the substandard building section.
Is there anything--
So it's not as unclear as, you know, just health and safety, which I think was Commissioner Cisco's question and perhaps yours as well.
Right.
Okay.
Mine was slightly different. That's why I wanted to make sure that I heard it right. Is there any language that addresses a property that has an ADU already existing but may not be compliant with current building standards? For example, like it's built to a lot line that we no longer allow, but they want to update that unit. Will they have to -- can they upgrade that unit in its current location? Or will they have to comply with current building standards? Are they grandfathered in? Are they not? Out of curiosity.
Thanks for the question. I just want to make sure I understand it. Are you -- is the question because the setback is not sufficient?
It could be the setback. It could be the height of the ceilings. It could be, you know, it was built in 1938.
Okay.
You know, and exists, and now we've changed the standards of what a new ADU can look like. It can't look like that any longer. So what happens to that person? Is there any language that addresses that? A lot of the language is about building and subdividing lots to build ADUs. What about existing?
Well, the provision that relates to permitting kind of after the fact is kind of -- it is correcting or anticipating those scenarios where you don't have -- where they are in violation of what the code currently requires. The other part is that if somebody wanted to come in and get a permit, so this is an idea they have now, they want to update, say, well, I'm trying to envision a circumstance. I think most likely how it would be handled is if a project was permitted, so planning staff would take a look to see if they received the permit at the time, if they complied with what was required. We do have ways to modify that unit. It's just considered a legal nonconforming unit, and so there are some ways that you can modify it, even though it's not in compliance with what would be required now. So we wouldn't necessarily require that it be moved or torn down, but it's a case-by-case situation, if that helps.
Okay, thanks. And in one of the findings, it says, the required findings, the first bullet, A, the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of all the elements of the general plan and any applicable specific plan. We're updating our language to be in compliance or in concert with state law, right? Is there a situation where making these language changes to be in compliance with state law would be inconsistent with our general plan?
I have not come across that scenario to date, but if that did occur, we would need to draft some language for our general plan, and then that would need to be adopted as a general plan amendment so that the two remain consistent.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I do have one, and it has to do with the shared parking. Can you give an example as to how that would work?
Thanks for the question, Chair Weeks. So an example would be if a kind of more commercial use, which is abutting a residential use, had a surplus of parking during the time where the residential use might need more parking. So oftentimes, our commercial uses are more occupied during the day when people are not at home, and so in the evenings, when more people need to park, the commercial parking lot might be entirely vacant or mostly vacant, and so they kind of have different peak hours. In that case, the commercial parking spaces could be basically reserved for those residential uses or residential tenants, and they would be able to park there during specific hours. And so that just really allows less land being used for parking, and it would also be recorded against the property so as things change, especially if the owner changed for that commercial property or even the tenant, it's understood that those spaces would be reserved for that residential use.
Thank you. And when do you plan on taking this to council?
We have it tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, January the 7th.
Okay, so with that, I will go with -- Vice Chair.
Karen's question sort of spurned one in my head. So the shared parking item, is there a provision where, like, there's a commercial building that has a parking -- its own dedicated parking lot that they keep chained off after hours? Is there a way to have a shared parking agreement for, like, restaurants in the area, or the city could have a shared parking agreement to let people coming downtown in the evenings use that lot?
Yes, so it's not specific. Thank you for the question. It's not specific to like a residential and commercial. It could -- it really could be a variety of combinations. That was just one example. The government code outlines specific criteria, like there needs to be a certain proximity between the shared spaces and then the land use that wants to use those spaces, but otherwise, it really can be a variety of-- But otherwise, it really can be a variety of different uses.
Okay, so with that, Commissioner Pardo.
I had a question in regards to the Assembly Bill 1287. Can you elaborate more on what would qualify a project for 100% over the base density?
Thank you for the question. I can, so I, there's a new table that would be added to the city's density bonus ordinance under a new subsection called additional density bonus. So this would be subsection H. And it has two different tables, which have percentages for certain affordability levels, and then the percentage of density bonus that corresponds with that. So in a, one example would be a project, so I should back up. In order for a project to qualify for this additional density bonus, they first need to achieve a 50% density bonus under an existing table that's within the density bonus. And that would be, you know, say they provide 10% of the units as very low, say that equals 50%. Then they could take advantage of this additional density bonus. And if they were to provide 15 of the units to moderate income households, then they would qualify for that other 50%. So the 50 plus the 50 is how you get to 100%. So right now, the table, and I'm happy to pull this up if it would be helpful because I'm talking about a lot of numbers. The table that exists in the city zoning code currently can allow for up to 100%, but that's only for projects where essentially all the units are deemed restricted as affordable. What this does is it actually allows for a lot less than 100% of the units to be deemed restricted as affordable and still allow for that 100% density bonus to be achieved.
Was the previous bill to encourage developers to have affordable housing? And now that we have enough affordable housing, this is to enhance, to increase housing in general?
My, my understanding is they're just providing another, another way for a developer to get that 100% density bonus above what the general plan allows. So it's just additional options. And it also allows for more moderate type units to qualify for additional density. But I don't, I don't think it speaks to necessarily us meeting our goals. It just provides additional options.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. If you are in the chambers and wish to make comments on this item, please make your way to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Seeing no one rise, I will go ahead and close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the commission. So are there any final questions of commissioners? Okay, then if someone would like to make a motion for the resolution? Commissioner Cisco?
I'll be reading our revised resolution. And I move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa recommending to City Council a zoning code text amendment to ensure municipal code consistency with state law, file number REZ 24-004, and wait for the reading of the text.
Second? Thank you. So that was moved by Commissioner Cisco and seconded by Vice Chair Duggan. So we'll go with comments. We'll start with Commissioner Sanders.
This seems pretty straightforward. We're just getting our language together so that we're in compliance with state law. So I don't see any issues in making all the findings to support the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
I echo my fellow commissioner. I appreciate the discussion. I think they were very thoughtful questions and seems like a pretty straightforward resolution to me.
Thank you. Commissioner Pardo.
I can make all the required findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Cisco?
I can also make all the required findings.
And Vice Chair?
I can also make all the required findings.
And I can also make all the required findings. So with that, if it was moved by Commissioner Cisco, seconded by Vice Chair Duggan, so if we could have the roll.
Thank you. Commissioner Cisco?
Aye.
Commissioner Pardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Vice Chair Duggan?
Aye.
Chair Weeks?
Aye. So that passes with five ayes and one member absent. And we'll move on to 11.2 and say goodbye and Happy New Year.
Sorry, just to let, the record passes with six.
I'm sorry.
The record passes with six ayes?
Oh, what did I say?
Five.
Five, I'm sorry. Yes, six, no, five ayes. There's only six of us here tonight, right? Oh, I'm sorry. God. Sorry, thank you.
It's the new math.
Yes. So with that, Happy New Year.
It's been a pleasure and an honor serving with you all for the past year. And I want to wish you all a very mellow holiday season and mellow New Year. Staff as well, you guys are awesome. I learn so much from you all every day and everyone in the gallery as well. Thank you for being here and happy holidays to you all.
Thank you. It does take a village to keep me on track. So with that, we will move on to item 11.2. It is a public hearing landmark alteration process improvements and cultural heritage board and design review board consolidation. And Deputy Director Jones will be presenting this item to us tonight.
All right. Thank you, Chair Weeks and members of the commission. So yes, so as mentioned, the item before you is the landmark alteration process improvements and cultural heritage board and design review board consolidation item. So what this project entails is looking at amendments to our zoning and municipal code as well as our processing review procedures for owners of historic properties. And really the items before you are kind of in two categories. The first is looking at streamlining and enhancing our landmark alteration or LMA permit process. And this is for properties that are located within one of the city's eight historic preservation districts, as well as those properties that are designated as local landmarks. And then the second piece is looking at consolidation of our cultural heritage board and design review board in both the duties and the composition of both of those boards into a single design review and preservation board. There we go. So the, the map shown here shows the location of the preservation districts within the city. As I mentioned, in addition to this, we also have 21 designated landmarks. There's a list of those included in your staff report. So I'll start with a little bit of history. So in 2018, the council considered and adopted an ordinance that included some streamlining, in particular for our design review process. It included creation of a couple of different processes, one being a director level design review process that really helped us to streamline the review of certain items that need design review. We took the time since 2018 to really analyze that process, to see how it has been working and see how it could be placed and used with other entitlement permits that we have here at the city. One of those is the landmark alteration permit process. That process was added into our zoning code in 2004 with the comprehensive update at that time of the zoning code and has not been looked at since. So we really wanted to take a chance to take what we learned with the design review process and see how it might work with the landmark alteration. In addition to that, we were looking at a complimentary item that was really looking at reviewing all of the city's boards, committees, and commissions throughout the city to address potential consolidation and addressing staff resources as well as redundancy. With a number of members of the cultural heritage board resigning recently, which I'll get to into in a moment, this was an opportunity for us to take a look at that board and how it might be consolidated into the work that the design review board does. So before I get into the cultural heritage board, in January of 2024, so this year, the city council held a study session where they looked at the city's permitting fees and looked at a draft fee study to determine how we might get to more of a full cost recovery for staff time that is put into the review of all of the permits that we do here at the city. There are a number of fees that were in our prior fee schedule that provided reductions and subsidies for fees, and that includes our landmark alteration permit fees. There was a pretty significant subsidy provided for those fees in the, in the prior schedule. We brought that to the attention of the council during that study session and seek feedback on, or sought feedback on the items that the council might want to continue providing subsidy for. Ultimately, what moved forward, which was at the March 2024 council meeting, was the full fee study with certain fee reductions, but it did not include the landmark alteration permit reductions. When those fees went into effect in July of this year, there were a lot of concerns raised, in particular about the landmark alteration permit fees, which did go up quite significantly. So at the July 17th meeting of the cultural heritage board, that was brought up as a significant concern by the board members. Following that meeting, we had formal resignations of five of our board members. We still have two members who have not yet resigned, so the board is still there and new members could be appointed by the council. But we took this opportunity to really look at what could be done as far as consolidation was concerned. And then in November of this year, we brought forward a, a study session to the design review board to consider the amendments that are before you today, which I'll get to in a little bit in the presentation. So the proposed amendments have been developed to do four main things. First, we're looking at streamlining the landmark alteration process, which I mentioned. We also are wanting to make sure that we are maintaining and enhancing the city's preservation efforts, reducing time and cost for property owners. And this would be aside from looking at potentially reducing fees, which I'll talk about a little bit later, and then providing a more streamlined review authority process to better allocate our city resources. So the landmark alteration permit process that is in our code is in three main categories. There are projects that are exempt from the landmark alteration permit process. There are items that are, or projects that would qualify for a minor review, which is reviewed by our zoning administrator. And then there are major projects that would go to the cultural heritage board. So in looking at these and really trying to focus on ways that we could streamline, make things easier for folks outside of just potentially having the council relook at the fees, we were looking at ways that we could provide more exemptions or clarifications to the exemptions, as well as some other things which I'll get into. So this slide identifies the proposed changes to the list of exemptions that are in the code. So there's a number of items that are looking at providing clarification specifically to the types of repair, renovation, or restoration that are exempt, clarifying that repainting is exempt only for previously painted exterior materials, the types of re-roofing that are exempt, and when replacement windows and doors are exempt from the process. We're also recommending that an exemption be added for the installation of new landscaping and site features that are otherwise allowed by right, and when they are determined to be similar to the original era and consistent with the district in which they're located. And then finally adding an exemption for accessory dwelling minutes, which is consistent with state law. So one of the new things that we're proposing here, again, similar to the design review process that I mentioned earlier, is creating a director level landmark alteration permit process. And in creating this director level, and when I say director level, that is reviewed by our city staff in our office. So there's no public hearing that is required or public meeting. However, we did want to make sure that folks in the area are aware of a project that might be coming in at this level. So we included some language that would require notification to neighbors within 300 feet. This would be sent out prior to making any act, or taking any action. And the notice would provide information on where they could get more information if they want, as well as provide information on the appeal process, should there be any concerns. The items that would go before the director or would be reviewed at the director level would be a lot of the items that previously were identified as a minor and went to the zoning administrator. And they're really in kind of two main buckets, for non-contributors and contributors. For non-contributors, which are structures that have been identified, and we have a list of those in our, our system, and we can help folks identify whether they have a property that's contributing or not. But non-contributors are ones that do not further the character in the preservation of the district. So the way that the, the draft code language reads is that any alterations or additions to a non-contributor would be found, if they are found to be compatible with the streetscape of the district. For properties that do contribute to the district, what we're looking at is providing language for the director level for renovation of, renovation or restoration of materials when a change is proposed to those materials, changes to windows and doors that are not visible to the public, addition and accessory structures less than 500 square feet that are not visible, new fences that would otherwise be allowed by right, roof equipment that is not visible, re-roofing with different materials, and then new landscape materials such as entryway, trellises, and decks. So for the minor landmark alteration process, again, this goes to the zoning administrator. We were looking at taking a lot of the items that previously would have gone to the cultural heritage board and bringing them down to the zoning administrator level. That includes painting of previously unpainted materials, change in roofline, both of those, they have to identify and provide documentation that there would be no impact to the structure of the district, fences that are taller than otherwise allowed, removing or enclosing a porch or adding a new porch, again, providing documentation that there would be no impact to the structure or the district, change in windows or doors that don't qualify for director level, additions to single family that are less than 500 square feet and not visible, as well as additions to non-residential and multifamily between 500 and 5,000 square feet, and then construction of a new primary single family. And I do want to say for both the director level, well, for the exempt items, the director level and minor landmark alteration permit, as well as the major, which I'll get into, but it's very important to understand that all of these have to be demonstrated that they meet the Secretary Interior standards for historic structures. If we, if staff is not able to determine that the proposed changes meet the standards, a historic resource analysis would be required by a professional. I'll get into some training that will be required for both staff and, and board members later, but that's a very important part of making sure that our preservation efforts are doing what they need to do. And so I just want to make that, that clear. And then finally, the major landmark alteration process. So those are again really major items that would come before the board. Those would include things like demolition or removal of an existing historic structure, additions to a single family that are greater than 500 square feet and visible to the public, additions to non-residential multifamily that are greater than 5,000 square feet, and construction of new non-residential and multifamily greater than 5,000. So the other piece to the zoning code amendments is looking at amending chapter 17-22. So this is the original historic and cultural preservation section of the municipal code. If you take a close look at that section of our code and you compare it to chapter 20-58 in our zoning code, which is the historic and cultural preservation section, they are nearly identical. So chapter 17-22 was adopted originally in 1988 and most recently updated in 1996. At that time, or at the time of the, the comprehensive zoning code update in 2004, almost everything from that chapter was brought over to the zoning code. It appears that it may have been, the point of that may have been to take it, bring it into the zoning code and eliminate chapter 17-22, but that wasn't done. So now we've got two sections. So now we've got two sections that are in there, and actually 17-22 is not as updated. So what staff is proposing to do is take the couple of pieces from 17-22 that were not incorporated, and that includes just some expanded purpose section language and then regulations regarding trees, bring that over into Chapter 20-58, and remove all of the rest of the language in 17-22 and replace it with some very minor language that directs the reader to the zoning code for those regulations. So I'd like to get into the consolidation of the Cultural Heritage Board and Design Review Board. So as I mentioned, we are recommending that the duties of both boards be consolidated into a single, what we're calling the Design Review and Preservation Board. The idea with this is really to provide a more streamlined process, ensuring that we maintain superior quality of the new structures built within the city, as well as preserving the historic character. So the chart that's shown on this slide just kind of gives you a little snapshot of the work that the Cultural Heritage Board has done within the last five and a half years until the board members were resigned in July of this year. As you can see here, we had a lot of cancellations of meetings. So in that five and a half years, 36 meetings were held and 99 were canceled. There were about seven joint Design Review Board and Cultural Heritage Board meetings held, and within that time, 15 major landmark alteration permits were acted on. So that's within a five and a half year period. So it's it's not a whole lot. I know some concerns were raised by the Design Review Board about adding duties, and we'll get into that in a little bit. But the reality is that there was not a tremendous amount of work that was done, at least action on major landmark alteration permits during that period. So the proposed language includes qualifications for the Design Review, this Design Review and Preservation Board. Our existing code includes qualifications for both the Cultural Heritage Board and the Design Review Board. Those qualifications, which include things like licensed architect, landscape architect, engineers, contractors, for the Cultural Heritage Board, includes archaeologists, historic preservationists. While those qualifications are in there, they are not required. They are recommended. In years past, we, on both boards, we have held, we've had members that held those qualifications. Unfortunately, in more recent years with the Cultural Heritage Board, while we had a board full of folks who were very passionate about preservation, we did not have any of the required qualifications. So we didn't have any architects, we didn't have any historic preservationists, and it really is something that is extremely important. And we heard that loud and clear when we brought this item before the Design Review Board in November. We've also heard that loud and clear from members of the community, including two former Cultural Heritage Board members. So we took that feedback, and what is before you is some revised language from what was originally put out, and that the revised language includes requirements. So we are proposing that at least two architects be required for this board, at least one landscape professional be required, and at least one practicing archaeologist, architectural historian, or historian be required. The remaining seats do not need to be one of those. They can be, but they don't have to be. But they do need to be seated with somebody who is involved in the design, construction, engineering, or preservation realm. And then all members will have to demonstrate through their the application process their interest in both architectural design as well as preservation here in Santa Rosa. A concern was brought up about, you know, how are we going to make sure that the council seats the members as identified in the code? Having the word required in there this time will certainly help. What we're also going to be putting into place is a process where all applications for this board are provided to the Planning and Economic Development Department. We will review the applications and ensure that any any applications that do not meet these qualifications are not sent forward to the city council. Another question came up about, again, kind of how these seats are going to be filled. Does it really work with the way that the council currently seats this board, which is each council member appoints an individual board member, very similar to the Planning Commission? We are working with the city clerk's office right now on that process to see if it makes more sense to have it be a a board that is seated by the full council. And if we do make a change like that, it will require an amendment to the council policy on seating board and commission members. So that is something that we will bring forward to the city council when this item moves forward. But I just wanted to make the commission aware that we were looking at that. The other concern that has come up is about the fact that the city is now in district elections for council members, and that that potentially has had an issue with seating of board members. And I just want to make clear, and I think most of you are probably aware of this, the council members are not required to select members that live within their district. They can, and they oftentimes want to, but they're not required to do so. And then the final thing, point I want to make on this slide is that the city for many years has been looking at the potential of applying to be a certified local government or CLG, which is through the State Office of Historic Preservation. That program, if you are certified, provides opportunities for grant funding and other resources to help with preservation efforts. It is something that we have been interested in, but we have not received direction from the council or resources to pursue that in recent years. But we wanted to make sure that we remained competitive to be able to apply to that program should the council direct us to do so. So we were very careful in how we looked at these qualifications to make sure that they match with what would be required for that CLG program, and it does work. So we would we would be able to pursue that should the council ask us to do that. Okay, so the processing review procedures for owners of historic properties. So this is a document that is primarily an informational document. It is not a regulatory or policy document. It was adopted by the council in 2001. It was intended to provide information to assist property owners and developers and citizens within those preservation districts. The document has not been updated since it was adopted, so it's been almost, or yeah, I guess almost 24 years. A lot of the information that is within that document is outdated and needs to be updated. Because it was adopted by the council, any changes to it have to go to the council for approval. Because it is an informational document, as I mentioned, it's not regulatory or policy, staff, what staff is hoping to do is provide language within the code that would authorize the director to make any necessary changes to that document as needed as time goes on. If, you know, if there's changes in, you know, the way that landmark alteration permits are processed or information that we need, that type of thing, we want to be able to do that without having to go to the council for every change. And then it would be something that would live on our website, and we'd be dynamic, and we'd be able to provide the information necessary for those that that live and own property in those areas. So as far as notification is concerned, for this particular public hearing, we did place a notice in the Press Democrat. We also sent notices out to all of those who have signed up for emails who are subscribed to the Cultural Heritage Board and the Design Review Board email distribution list. So that's a little over 2,000 folks who received the notice. We also posted on our social media sites. We created a project website that has information as well as links to the draft amendments. And then we also did some reach out to some of the preservation district representatives and members of, former members of the Cultural Heritage Board. So I wanted to give a little synopsis of what the the Design Review Board provided as far as comments during the study session in November. Generally speaking, there was support for the streamlining of the landmark alteration permit process. The main concerns of the the board related to the consolidation, they're identified here. Some of these have been addressed, some have not. There was general concern about combining the duties, that it might be too much. As I mentioned in the previous slide, really looking at the amount of major landmark alteration permits that come before them. I don't think that it will be as cumbersome as what the idea was. There was also a thought about adding more than seven members. Staff considered that, but as the board, as the commission is probably aware, it's hard enough to get consensus consensus with a seven-member body, and adding more to that could be very challenging. So it's not a recommendation from staff. There was a request to add licensed architects and designers and historic preservationists. Again, make that be a requirement and not a should or a, you know, a desired. And so, as mentioned, we did make that change to the language, so those are required. They also had an interest in maintaining some non-licensed professionals, so that is reflected in the the few more broadly-based positions that aren't required. They emphasized the need for training, and that was particularly for city staff as well as the board. And so I do want to, and we heard that from the the community as well, so I did want to make it clear for, and this was outlined in the staff report, but wanted to make it clear here also that the planning division has a training budget. You know, it's it's adopted each fiscal year, so it can ebb and flow depending on city budget constraints. But we do have funding for training for both the board as well as staff members, and so that is something that we will be emphasizing as we move forward. We've done a little bit of searching on our own, and there are some free training opportunities that we can take advantage of as well. But that is something that we have the ability to do and will be doing moving forward. And then finally, there was discussion about considering reducing landmark alteration permit fees. So as the commission is well aware, permit fees are not within the purview of the Planning Commission, they are strictly with the council. We do recognize and definitely understand the concerns that have been raised. When we bring this item before the city council, it will very likely be on the same evening that we also bring a study session to look at our new fee schedule that was adopted. One of the items that will be discussed is consideration of a fee reduction for landmark alteration permits. So that will be moving forward to the city council. And then finally, public comment. So a lot of this I kind of already mentioned. Generally speaking, we are hearing support for the streamlining of the landmark alteration permit process, as well as the boards and commission, or the consolidation of the boards. I just talked about this, training has been identified as essential, so we will be doing that. There's the request for reduction in the permit fees, which we just talked about. And then there were some specific recommended changes from one of the members of one of the preservation districts. It was included as an attachment to your staff report, and most of the changes that were identified in that have been incorporated in what is before you tonight. So with that, it is recommended by the Planning and Economic Development Department that the Planning Commission, by resolution, recommend to the city council adoption of the zoning and municipal code amendments, as I just outlined, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff before I open the public hearing? Okay, I have some, I guess mine are actually more comments, so we'll go ahead and I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Excuse me. If you are in the chambers and wish to make a public comment, please make your way to either one of the podiums and state your name for the record if you so choose, and you will have three minutes there. You'll see a countdown timer on the screen, so we will go ahead with Mr. Musser.
Good evening, Chair Weeks and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Brian Musser. I live at 403 Brown Street, and I am the past chair of the Cultural Heritage Board. I'd like to compliment staff on their report. It's gone through an evolution process. They've made a lot of changes, and I think they've done a lot of listening of the Design Review Board and some of us ex-Cultural Heritage Board members. I would like to point out just a few things for your consideration. Just keep in mind that pretty much all residential landmark alterations are now going to be handled, except in a few exceptions, by either the new director or the zoning administrator. The the new Design Review Preservation Board will pretty much just see very large projects and pretty much commercial-type projects. And this is going to be a challenge for the board. I've sat through several concept reviews with the Design Review Board, and in the past, the Design Review Board has had a focus different than the Cultural Heritage Board. The Cultural Heritage Board is that of preservation, the Design Review Board is that of design, and the Design Review Board loves new buildings and they love tall buildings. So some of the areas, the challenging areas, are going to be where you have a historic district, and then you have the overlay of the station, of the downtown station area plan. These are typically growth areas and opportunity areas. So this Design Review Board is really going to have to have the the ability to both look at new opportunities as well as preserving the past. I'll kind of keep it short here. I'll just go ahead and make my recommendations for your consideration if you want to add comments to the proposal tonight, and that is make professional qualifications for mandatory for the new Design Review Preservation Board. Allow the city council members to appoint at-large applicants who meet the professional qualifications. Require the director and the zoning administrator receive mandatory training as relates to their decision-making in director and minor landmark alteration decisions. Provide training opportunities to the new Design Review Preservation Board. And then, most importantly, please consider recommending the fees for landmark alteration permits be minimized altogether, eliminated. As homeowners of historic properties feel they are being unfairly taxed, failure to minimize and eliminate these fees may result in renovations not being done, being done without a permit, or needed repairs not being done at all. Additionally, families may move out of historic districts, or families may choose not to live in a historic district.
Thank you.
Because of these fees, there has been talk of neighborhoods considering removing historic designation from their neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Musser.
Thank you for your time. And staff, I know you're trying to make things better.
Thank you. So we'll go to that podium.
My name is Cher Ennis, and I've lived in the West End neighborhood for 52 years. I've done three single-family residential projects in the neighborhood, two of them from the ground up. The house I currently live in is within the historic district. When I bought the property, it was completely uninhabitable, and today it's pretty glorious. The permit fee for my major landmark alteration permit in 2011 was $753. I did another project in 2018. The fee then was $1,337, 178% of what it had been seven years earlier. Now, I need to replace the roof on my detached garage. Both times I went through the landmark alteration process, I received approval for a metal roof. I want a metal roof on my garage to match the house, be more fire-resistant, and provide the best surface for a future solar installation. I have no doubt that I can receive permission for this roof. But because of the current fee structure put in place in July, a minor landmark alteration permit now costs somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000. That's 580 to 750% more than 2018. The cost of the permit makes a simple re-roof with a superior material on an accessory structure financially infeasible. The vast majority of structures subject to the landmark alteration process are sweet little family homes, not McDonald mansions. Most of us don't have deep pockets. Our homes are our biggest investments. At this point, I'm confused about why anyone would consider buying into a historic district. I hope the city will reconsider its current trajectory. I hope the city will reconsider its current trajectory toward requiring a historic resource survey from a qualified professional, presumably an architectural historian but not defined anywhere, for many of the projects. When I got quotes for that service, the range for my project was $4,000 to $12,000. That's a tremendous cost for a small residential project. The stated goal of the city is to foster and encourage the preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation of structures. The current fee situation incentivizes property owners to perform work without the benefit of permits and deal with forgiveness versus permission. Or they can simply let their properties rot. I understand that fees are not before you, but want to emphasize that the city must correct this situation so property owners will trouble themselves with obtaining permits to maintain their property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hill, and you can actually, if you want to lower the podium, it's on, there's a button on the left-hand side.
Oh, I'm good. I'm not on my tiptoes yet.
Okay.
Happy holidays, everybody. The two speakers before me really said everything that I was going to say. Obviously, you're not, your peer views, not to look at the costs, but it is true that most of the historic districts that we have in the city are starter homes for young families or seniors that are still able to live in their home because they're one-story and they're very small homes. And neither of those demographics have a lot of accessible cash for exorbitant fees that have been proposed or actually rolled out by the city. So I do hope that we get to the council level. Those will be rescinded. But I do want to thank staff for accepting, reviewing, accepting, encouraging the input that the different people who are stakeholders had and incorporating it into what they're presenting tonight. I will say that I think it's not, shouldn't just be a budget item, that staff at the planning department may get training. I think they absolutely have to get training, and it has to happen every year, especially the way staff tends to rotate these days in government. And the critical certified local government designation would definitely be a part of that because what you may not know is that there's a listserv that that designation offers you, and that listserv is available to staff. And I would assume members of the cultural heritage board are combined with the design review board to ask questions. So that would be a critical element that would be offered. It also has to give 10% of the annual historic preservation grant it gets from the National Park Service to fund preservation activities in communities in the state. So that means surveys, national registered district application help, and preservation elements and plans that may be being considered and changed, just like tonight. But we don't have that, so we, this cannot be funded at this point by the, by being a certified local government. So the certified local government program also ensures that whatever the city would do in regards to preservation would conform to the state and federal standards, which is very important. I do hope also that it's noted to council members when they start appointing for this board, which I assume we are probably headed towards creating, that they can go outside their districts. Maybe it's, it is possible now, but maybe they are not aware of that. And with the professional criteria we're putting out there, which is very important and needed, they need to be able to find, search anywhere they can in the city to find that key element. Thank you so much for your time and for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Is there any other comments by the, by members of the public before I close the public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, I will go ahead and close this public hearing and bring it back to the commission. So any questions, comments? Vice Chair.
I have a couple of questions. Let me see if I can read my writing. So right now, as the design review board is configured, are there any requirements for the membership on that board that are in conflict with this new proposed board?
No, actually, the, the way that the code currently reads, I've got it here somewhere. So the, the membership is actually pretty similar on both the design review board and cultural heritage board, with the exception of the cultural heritage board having the qualification for a historic preservationist or archaeologist or historic architectural historian. So when we first drafted this, really all we were doing was bringing that forward to this new design review and preservation board. But with both boards, the way it currently reads, it is a consideration. It's a recommendation. It is not required for either board.
People have mentioned qualified professional. Is that defined anywhere?
So it is not. You know, we deal with this with other technical documents that, you know, we have, that we require traffic studies, biological studies. You know, generally speaking, it's folks who have education and/or licenses in the particular, whatever the area is. And in this case, it's preservation. So we can certainly provide a definition in our code that clearly outlines that. But generally speaking, it would be a, somebody who has a background, educational or licensed background in historic preservation, architectural historian, that type of thing. That's usually what we get.
That might be helpful. And instead of people just presenting themselves as being interested in historic structures and saying that they can write a report about something.
Yeah, we usually don't accept, we wouldn't accept reports that are just by somebody who says that they have an interest in it. But yes, we can certainly provide a definition.
Okay, and also, I know that the city has not designated any new districts since the Ridgeway District, I believe, was the last one that was designated. And what's the mechanism for bringing forward new historic districts? And will that continue in the same way?
Yes, it would be the same mechanism, and it's outlined in our code. So there's kind of two ways that a district can come forward. One is through an applicant-proposed district, which would be, you know, it could be a single person, you know, for something that large probably is not. But for example, you know, we've had interest in potentially the J.C. neighborhood becoming a district. So neighbors could get together and make a proposal to the city. It would go, right now, without these changes, it would go first to the cultural heritage board for recommendation to the city council. The other way would be for the council to identify this as a need and prioritize staff funding and resources for a city-initiated project, which again, would first go to the cultural heritage board or, you know, if this board is created, the design review and preservation board for recommendation to council.
Okay. And then one other, probably weirdly specific question. On page eight of your presentation, one of the things for the minor landmark alteration process talks specifically about removing or enclosing a porch or adding a new porch. And why is, since that can change the character of a house, why is that considered a minor landmark alteration?
That's a great question. So the, there is specific language I need to find here, but it is required to be consistent with the district. Yeah, so the way the, the language is drafted is that it can only be done at that minor level if it is found to have no significant impact to the structure or the surrounding preservation district. And so, again, you know, as I mentioned earlier, if that is something that staff and/or the zoning administrator can't make with the information that is provided by the applicant, you know, emphasis on making sure that any proposal is consistent with the Secretary of the Interior standards, which we review with any of these projects that come forward. If we can't make that finding with the information provided, that's when we would require a historic preservation report to analyze that and identify. And if it is identified that it would have an impact, then it would need to go to the higher body, so the design review and preservation board.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I have a few. And I appreciate the members of the public being here tonight and realizing that our role is not to deal with the fees. So a couple of things. I like the idea of having the board members be at-large, at least for the first go-round. I think that would, the council does do that for the housing authority and I believe Board of Building Regulations, and I think a couple of other specific members of different boards. I think that would be far cleaner and would enable us to have the professionals that we need on the board. So I, I support that. You mentioned that we are not a certified local government because it's not been on the council's goals. And so would it, in essence, a council member would have to bring that forward and say during goal-setting and saying, "This year, I'd like us to explore that." Is that how that would work?
Yes, I would say it would come through, likely come through council goal-setting. And so if the council, the full council decides that is a priority of the city, then they would need to identify, you know, resources would need to be identified, including funding to have staff work on that, and identify other items. We've, we've got a pretty full plate, and so we've got lots of work on our, on our agenda right now. So there would need to be things that would come down the list in order to make that a priority. And, you know, while it is extremely important and would provide a lot of good resources, it has not been identified as that priority over other things that we're working on.
And then the training for both the board members and staff, I think, is also vitally important. And I know budgets come and go, and a lot of times, there is no money for that. But I do think that should be stressed to the council during budget sessions, you know, whether it be by individual members of the public or board and commission. And that, I'm not sure, Ms. Hill, I think, was mentioned how staff comes and goes. And so how do you deal with that? Do you train all staff, or do you have two or three designated staff people that deal with historic preservation or that cultural design?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So in past years, we were blessed with having a staff member on board who had a master's degree in historic preservation. So it was extremely helpful. Unfortunately, that staff member is no longer on staff. However, what I have found is that identifying specific staff members to focus on certain things and, and not, you know, others, so kind of siloing a particular staff member to work on a certain thing can be challenging for many ways. One is that that person gets stuck doing all of that stuff, which maybe that's what they love doing. But it also creates a problem when they move on, you know, to another jurisdiction. And so what I would be looking at doing is providing training opportunities for our full staff so that there is that base of knowledge so that any of our planners could work on these projects and provide the, the review that would be necessary.
And then that would help with consistency. When somebody comes in, they're getting the same answer as a person who was just in there.
That is correct.
Okay. I think those are my questions and comments. Any other questions or comments? Okay, and we, this is a resolution. So if somebody would like to enter the resolution.
I...
Hey, Commissioner Cisco.
Need to make it big enough to read. Okay. I move a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Santa Rosa making findings and determinations and recommending the city council adoption of zoning and municipal code text amendments to address streamlining and process improvements for the landmark alteration permit process and consolidation of the duties and composition of the cultural heritage board and design review board into a single design review and preservation board and wait for the reading of the text.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so that was moved by Commissioner Cisco and seconded by Vice Chair Duggan. So before I ask for final comments, did you get what you needed from us?
I did, thank you.
Okay. So then we'll start with Commissioner Peterson.
Well, I think a lot's changed since 1988. And I think what was going on with Santa Rosa at the time, you know, this was a, a good movement, a good process to put in place to avoid a lot of the problems that we're dealing with now, where, you know, things just got kind of torn out and paved over in the '60s. But, you know, a lot has changed since then, and, you know, I think that these are a very reasonable, well-thought-out approach to dealing with both, you know, how do you handle historic districts and landmark alteration permits and the process around that, as well as streamlining the operation of city government to make it more effective for the people that are having that frontline contact with it. You know, we heard a lot of the tensions that come when you've got people that can have opinions about your property and what you can do with it. And I think this is a good approach, just threading the needle on that tension. The fee issue is really not in front of us. So with that, I can make all the required findings, and we'll be voting in favor of the resolution.
Thank you.
Well, I think this is a, I mean, an excellent body of work. You put a lot of effort into this, and I really think the consolidation of the boards or recreation of a new board is really important based on all of the information that's in the staff report. I watched the design review study session and heard the concerns, and I'm hearing the similar concerns again tonight. And I think, I think the biggest concern are establishing the new board with districts and council appointments. So I echo Chair Weeks' suggestion that maybe the council consider making this an at-large board so that it doesn't come down to, well, who gets the last straw of the historic preservation professional? Like, and how are you going to find that? And so some work on how to make that the, the most efficient and likely-to-happen thing. I think the other thing that's a concern is the, the training. And I hear the, the desire for mandatory training. And I know how our, our budgeting goes, but I'm wondering if concurrently with the establishment of the new board, there could be at least a one-time mandatory training for the director and zoning administrator. You know, they will always be reviewing projects in relationship to the Secretary of Interior standards. But just so there's some comfort level out there with the historic districts that, that these staff members are going to be trained. So, but overall, I think it's, it's an improvement to city processes and just, you know, an excellent piece of work, kind of on the fly here, but done very well. And I know we're not talking about fees tonight, but I just wanted to appreciate Denise Hill's suggestion that when it does come down to fees, that the word subsidized be replaced with investment. I thought that was a wonderful suggestion. I thought that was a wonderful suggestion, and language is important. So, and with that, I can make all of the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Pardo?
Just want to mention, I'm still kind of lost on how the fees went up that high. That's ridiculous. I thought the whole point of having the board was to keep those particular areas, preserving them historical, not to gain more money from the public. So, but other than that, I can make all the required findings.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Well, similar to all my colleagues, I can make all the required findings. I also want to thank staff for taking all the suggestions, or a lot of the suggestions from the public, and incorporating them in to the proposed changes. I think that you've made a process that, you know, on the face of it, I wasn't, I didn't think I was in favor of doing this, but I think this is a very good proposal. Let's see. I am also in favor of mandatory training, maybe a one-time thing, as Commissioner Sisko suggested, and then maybe some sort of regular annual training. Let's see. Also, I'm in favor of at-large memberships. I don't know, some people know, but Commissioner Carter and I are neighbors. We live in the same district, because it's not written in the code that you cannot appoint plenty of commissioners from the same district. And let's see. And also, yeah, I'd say if you're sending the council along our comments as well as our, the resolution, I'd say I'm also in favor of looking at any kind of fee reductions or subsidies that we can make, because I can't imagine being a homeowner and having, you know, a project like this reviewed and having to pay these very high fees, and wondering about the consistency of the information that the reviewer, if they're not trained, is providing, and, you know, what exactly the fees are going to. And I can sympathize with people who take out, who do work on their house without permits because of that. And then also, I'd be in favor of doing the certified local government program, if that's possible.
Okay, so I think you have already my comments, and I can make all the required findings. And I do want to say thank you to staff for this iteration. It was very different than what went to Design Review Board, and I also watched that meeting and the fact that you, you know, really took to heart what people said, I think is really exemplary. So thank you. So with that, if we could have the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Sisko?
Aye.
Commissioner Pardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Duggan?
Aye.
Chair Weeks?
Aye. So hopefully I get this right. That passed with five ayes, one abstention, and one absence. Okay. So with that, unless there's anything else from staff, this is our final meeting of 2024. So I wish you all happy holidays and see you in 2025.